I'm taking minutes.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting has been properly advertised and posted in accordance with Public Law seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. And it's been advertised in the Atlantic City Press and posted in City Hall and our municipal website. If you could please rise for the flag salute. For the flag for the screen there. Okay, the American flag appear on our screen. Wow. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please keep in mind all of our servicemen, all of our emergency personnel who are protecting our lives at all times. Please pray for the safety of our country and for all those who have affected with coronavirus. And let's please pray that this pandemic may soon pass us forever. Amen. Okay.
Can you just tell them I'm sending them an updated agenda on?
Yeah. John is gonna be sending you an updated agenda in a couple of seconds because we have a couple of our extra add-ons that are.
Minor things.
Minor. As a gift. Um. Can I vote call please?
Yes, uh, Mr. Dilch. Mr. Dilch? Hello?
He's muted, hold on.
Oh, okay. I'll call the rest, uh, Mr. Olson?
Here.
Ms. Ellen? Ms. Ellen? Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Hold on.
There, but I see it.
Dilch is ready.
Mr. Dilch?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, roll call, Mr. Dilch.
I can't see, yeah, I'm here, I can't see anything though.
Okay.
Somebody gonna let me in?
You're in.
I can't see anybody, I mean, I got the preview screen.
We see you loud and clear. Call for Ms. Ellen.
And Ms. Ellen. Can you?
Ma'am, she's muted, hold on.
I apologize, I lost the sound, so I had to go back out and come back in.
Mr. Dilch, you might have to go back out. Oh, he did. Let's wait a moment. Oh, there he is.
No, I don't know, I can't see anything.
Why don't you sign back on? Mayor, while Mr. Dilch is coming back, um, can I make a suggestion for Mrs. Cassagran's benefit? Can we move her up on the agenda maybe? Behind the engineers report?
Behind the engineers report?
Yes, for the code report.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just hearing this now, but I would, sure. Um. Mr. Dilch, are you in?
No, no, he's gotta come back, hold on.
Well, while we're waiting for Mr. Dilch to come back in, in light of the full agenda and in consideration for the participants and the residents, we should look to end the meeting by nine so we can go in to close and be done by ten.
That would be a good thing, if we can get that fast.
I mean, if we have leftover stuff, then we should just have another meeting then.
Alright. Randy, we have to wait until Nelson comes back in before we can continue, correct? Uh, let's give him a minute. Yeah.
Uh, tell them that the agenda was loaded on Google Docs.
Your updated agenda has been loaded onto our Google Docs, if you wanna go to that, please. Alright, Mr. Dilch, way back in.
Um, where is, where is the new agenda on Google Docs?
It's at the bottom.
Oh, I found it, okay, I'm good now, thank you.
Mr. Dilch, you back in?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Moving over to the open public portion, uh, I make the motion to adjutant to the public, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Randy, do we have anybody out from the public looking to speak?
I'm looking, there's no chat. Uh, well, Mr. Poe is waving.
Hmm. Mr. Poe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Randy, just so you know, I don't see the raise hand uh, tonight, I don't know if that something's changed or if you wanting us to say something in the chat or whatever, but.
That's a really good question.
Just FYI for that. Um. I guess at the moment, two, hopefully a couple of basic questions, one, um, what is the situation with the cell tower? Two, what is the situation with the fire company? And three, what are the add-ons to the agenda?
I'm not aware of anything with the fire company whatsoever.
Well, it's on the agenda under new business. Or at least it was.
Oh, that's.
What was it, John, I don't see that on my agenda.
That's the first one, and that's something to do that Jen suggested about some volunteer fire.
Okay.
We'll have to explain that.
So she's gonna explain that, okay, nobody had relayed that information to me, and I don't have it on this updated agenda, but.
That's number one, on the new business.
On the new business, that's why, very good.
And number two, and I think it was number two, under old business, was cell tower?
We will have to go into closed session to discuss that.
Was that related?
It's taking until contract re.
So it's related to the, okay.
Another, when you discuss contractual matters, that goes in a closed session.
Well, you have the option to do that, I'm simply asking, is that about the lease or about something else?
The lease.
Okay. And then what were the things that were added on to the agenda? Since we, since we don't have on Google Docs.
We have one particular resolution the county has requested us to do. And that would be resolution to support the explored, uh, explo- exploration of a feasibility study for a shared municipal court.
If I may, Mayor, I have a forty dash twenty twenty-one, a transfer resolution. And under new business, uh, a sand and gravel ordinance and a proposal from Frallinger Engineering for resurfacing. And, uh, that's it from what I can see.
Very good. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public? Is there anyone else in the public? If not. I don't see anyone else. People, if, folks, if you wanna use the chat window and just type in that you wanna speak, I think Mr. Poe's identified a problem um, that we have, so uh, please type in the chat window that you wanna be heard. Uh, and that would be helpful. Thank you, Mayor. Yes. So there's no one else in the, there's no one else in the public? I'm gonna make a motion to close the public. Is there a second? Mrs. Ellen, can you unmute? Um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving down the line here, we have, uh, Mike Frallinger.
Are there late breaking documents coming? Somebody saying something about documents coming, are they coming?
There's an updated agenda that's coming in. And it should be on the bottom of Google Docs. Mike, are you with us?
Yes, I am, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And how are you? Going well. Um, I'm pretty briefed from my report this evening. Um, we have the closeout documents in for the City Hall improvements, Ricky Slade, just waiting for them to get their paperwork back up and, uh, close that project out. Um, on my report, I still have D C twelve, that can be removed since, uh, the closed out packet has been sent to DOT. Um, I have an update on Fifth Avenue reconstruction, um, last month's meeting, recall, we hadn't heard from the, the Pine Lands. But they were, did provide us with a review, um, there were several comments that they had and some, you know, items they like us to provide, um, for their review and consideration, so we're in the process of, you know, addressing their items and we'll submit that up to them, um, you know, addressing their comments. And then lastly, um, council's aware that the city received a grant for the resurfacing of Maple Avenue in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars from the DOT. Uh, I prepared a proposal outlining, outlining our land surveying and engineering service for council review and consideration, um, for the engineering and survey work.
Okay. And we haven't heard anything. Sorry, go ahead.
Excuse me, and then, um, I can't wait, but I know we moved it up on the agenda, there was a, some correspondence regarding a driveway request on West, West Seventh, um, I can get into that now, or if you want me to go through the, uh, any questions with the report, um.
A driveway request? Did you say a driveway request?
Yes, I believe that the correspondence item number two on the agenda this evening.
Okay. Got that?
Um, yeah, so I, I looked into this, um, there was a sketch provided, um, and essentially the, there's a paper street, um, on the end of West Seventh Avenue. And the resident would like to construct um, and clear a portion of the public right of way. Um, pave, pave the street and then, you know, provide access to the proposed dwelling and driveway. Um, I did review the ordinance, and there is a specific section within the ordinance entitled eight dash two, construction paving of public right of ways. And it outlines provisions that individuals must follow, um, regarding, you know, improvements of the, of the right of way, there's certain standards outlined, um, and requirements, um, you know, particular to the, uh, the width, the, uh, paving specs. And, you know, all pertinent items, um, should a resident want to extend, um, a portion of a, a paper street. And also I would, um, just like remind you that this type of improvement would probably trigger some sort of review from the Pine Lands. Um, and that, that's outlined in the section that that review agency may be applicable as well as other outside agencies, um, particularly Soil Conservation District, the, the, uh, Atlantic County Office, um, depending upon the extent of the, uh, disturbance associated with the project.
So that's currently an asphalted road and enabled to continue moving further, uh, onto the unimproved area, that would have to be, uh, continue with asphalt, correct? Or could that be done with oil instead?
That's my understanding of the, uh, correspondence and, uh, sketches that were provided, um, to the city.
Right. Okay. Anything else, Mike?
That's all I have this evening.
Alright. So, couple of these lots here are actually in fact municipal lots, and I guess the, uh, applicant, Mr. Scorano, was looking to see if we would, A, be, uh, uh, we're able to sell it, and B, the conditions of what it would take to have to do the, uh, asphalt road. Uh, I think it has been done in the past. Uh, when someone is aware that there is a asphalt project that is going on, it's very possible that they can, uh, contact that asphalt company and while they have all their equipment here, they would then be able to, uh, uh, take care of that section of the road as well. Of course, that cost would bear entirely upon the applicant. Uh, the city would not pay for any of that, including the engineer, but it's an opportunity for the applicant to be able to, uh, reap some type of savings from the, uh, uh, asphalt company because they already have the equipment and you know, it has been done in the past that I'm aware of. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Rob Scorano here, if you don't mind. Uh, well, the meeting is not really open to the public, but being as to the applicant and being that we're talking about this, uh, I wanna, I'm gonna ask you to come on, yes.
Thank you, sir. I just, just, uh, a couple of things that I heard, just so, uh, can help straighten this out, so that property now I, I do own, um, it's not a city lot.
Okay.
And the corner of that, it's, this is so minor, um, I was just advised to bring it to you guys. The actual corner of the property now is like right at the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Just on reading some of the ordinances, I just wanna make sure, hey, I don't drive, you know, ten feet down into the dirt road and then into my driveway. Um, and if I can't do that, uh, you know, I'll do whatever you guys, uh, may need at that point if I need to clear the road or put asphalt DGA down or, or whatnot. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. So, you're aware of our ordinance that we have, Mr. Scorano, and, uh, the city will work with you to make sure that you can achieve what you're looking to do, I know you're a lifetime resident in the city. Um, which I respect. And whatever it's gonna take to help, you know, let you take care of what you gotta do, we'll do on our end. Try to make it as painless as possible. Um.
Thank you, sir, I, I appreciate that.
Sure. Uh, Mike, is there anything that, uh, further that maybe we should, uh, share with Mr. Scorano? That he should be aware of?
Um, just, really, I would just, you know, there's, there's the, the parameters that are outlined in section eight dash two, but just being in that area and, you know, our, um, experience with this road project for Fifth, just be advised that, um, it's probably, probably along with the, uh, improvement to, um, his parcel requires some sort of review and approval from the Pine Lands, so I just don't want that to go, uh, unnoticed.
Mike, that section of asphalt over there, that would be two inches or would it be four inches? Is there a reason why I'm asking?
I'm looking, let me see if there's a speci- the specification, I, I thought it was outlined in there, it, I believe it's, um, it requires.
Normally, it is two.
A base. I believe the, the ordinance states that has to have a six inch, uh, gravel base course and then the top course of three inches.
Okay. The reason why I was asking is because if he's gonna be having heavy equipment going in and out there and to help alleviate from, if he does put a road in, from the road getting broken apart, he could, um, the city could allow him to put the DGA material, the sub base, in which then the con- upon completion of the house that he wants to put in there, then he would be required by ordinance to, uh, asphalt the road then, and that helps to not let the road break up from heavy equipment going in and out of there. We have seen in the past a particular road here that I recalled, it was, uh, all broken apart from a tractor trailer coming in delivering a house. And that turned into a nightmare, so I don't wanna see this happen to Mr. Scorano. We're trying to develop a home and, um, you know, we can't, we can't in fact do that, Mr. Scorano, if you, you know, if you're okay with that.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it, and not to hold you up, just one question if I could for the engineer. How far down the road, uh, may I go, does it only, can I only, uh, add, you know, take fifty feet out of the dirt road, or do you need me to go further than that? Um, is just enough for me to get a driveway in where I could put an angle driveway off the road?
I'm not sure, it, it, whatever, I, I would just comply with the, the section of, of that ordinance, um. If that, if it's not specifically stated that you must go down the entire frontage, I would just go the distance you feel necessary, um, for your driveway. Un- unless there's, uh, certain parameters in the, in the ordinance that must be, uh, adhered to. I would just, you know, direct your attention to that section specifically.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scorano, just keep in mind, keep it, uh, fire, uh, fire company friendly, so in any event, if a fire vehicle ever did have to get into the property, you know, they'd be able to have a proper, uh, entrance next to that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What, what, what are we doing, what did we just do? I'm, I'm confused, what did we just do?
Just going over a couple of speci- specifics.
Sounds like you gave permission for a road, what, what did we just do?
Nelson?
Well, what, why is this business for city council, it sounds like a planning and zoning matter to me, what, what, what are we doing here?
We're not doing anything, the man's asking some questions and we're trying to be helpful to him, that's all.
Sounds like the mayor's fireside chat to me, what are we do, what, what, what was, what piece of business the city council just considered?
Nelson? We're just simply trying to assist the gentleman to, uh, be able to do what he's gotta do.
I, I'm, Mr. Solicitor, what am I missing?
It is a land use issue.
Okay. Very good.
We don't have the authority to lend permission for this.
No.
I ha- I, I appreciate Mr. Scorano coming to us, but he's in the wrong meeting, we, we don't have the authority to act on this.
Mi- Mr. Dilch, I, I know I don't have a fight in this battle, but I just wanna tell you the steps I took here. I went to, um, the zoning office, and he advised me just to bring it to you guys in presentation as such. And then he, and then I will go back to him after conversation with some questions that I had, that he said I would have to take it this way, and then I would go through him with everything else, I'm not. Um, just so I'm clear, I'm, I'm asking for your guys' opinion on a few things and the direction I have to travel with this.
Mr. Scorano, I appreciate that, and please don't think me am biased against you in any way. And I understand, it makes, what makes sense to me is that you might come to council and in the public session while the engineer is here, ask some questions of the city engineer just because he happens to be here and available to you, but and I'm just a council member, I'm not anything else, but we don't have the authority to grant permission for anything pursuant to developing a lot or a road or a park or a bench or anything else.
We granted, no, Mr. Dilch, we granted no permission of any kind.
You just did.
I'm trying to assist the man so he can go through this the easy way, okay?
You just told him how to use it, what to do.
Can we please? Let's move on with the meeting, we have.
When to put it down, when to pick it up?
Mr. Dilch, we have a big meeting tonight, a lot on the agenda, we're not gonna sit here and attack me on everything that I say tonight, okay? Otherwise.
Everything that you say, it's the first one spoken.
Let's please move on.
Did you just give the gentleman permission to put a road in and that's no matter, is that what you just did?
You made your point, Mr. Dilch.
Answer my question.
I don't have to answer your question.
Yeah, Joe, you do.
No, I do not.
And I have, I have the same questions.
Oh, my God.
We just.
Can you wonder why the meeting is driving on and on and on, because you just nitpick.
Okay, Joe.
Let's just do it best for our city, please.
Mr. Scorano, hello, it's me, I love you, you know that. But it, I understand Mr. Dilch is saying, we have no problems with anything like with you, your interest in building, or we do not. You know, I love you, you're a good boy, you grew up good. Uh, but I'm on the zoning board, and, um, I agree that it's, it's part of the zoning board thing. And as far as just letting us, if this is just to tell us that you're going to the zoning board with us, then that's fine. But I, I'm, I'm with Mr. Dilch and asking, did we just approve something?
Moving on down the line here.
Please answer this question, Mayor.
Mr. Dilch, I have no answers for you.
No, I had a question, Joe, and that's what I wanted to know, like I just explained to Robbie, and I, I, I wanted to go forth for him too, but it's not on this board that I would do that, it would be on the zoning board. And that's what I'm asking you here tonight is, it, was it just to let us know that he's gonna go to the zoning board to do this, like a heads up type thing? Um, but there was nothing to be approved because it has to go through the zoning board.
My understanding also is that, uh, not only did the city clerk, but, uh, the zoning officer had asked him to come before the council, okay? So I just simply gave a couple of helpful suggestions. I apologize, Mr. Scorano, this is not what I wanted to see happen, I'm just simply trying to be helpful.
It's nothing bad, Robbie, I'm sorry, Mr. Scorano. It's just, it's the wrong, it's just the wrong, uh.
We need to move on. We need to move on.
I, I might ask a question. As, as I understand, this driveway is going to go across the city, the, the public right of way, correct?
Yes, the end of the road, um, fi- fifty feet from where the asphalt ends now, say, into the dirt paper trail, that's there, correct?
So, so, the, the zoning officer asked you to get a sense of the, the, the body, whether they would object to that, is that why you, you're here?
That's correct, he basically said, um, it, it was like, bring it to this council, um, bring it to you, which bring it to this council. Propose, um, what you wanna do in a sense, and he says, if, and, and the question that I had, if you guys understand my questions and answer my questions, which you have, along with the engineer that's on the call, um, bring it back to him, and he says he will ta- he will then take the steps of, of, uh, the obvious Pine Lands and the variances of whatever else may have to be, uh, needed for the next step in construction.
Listen, I don't do land use law, but I know it's dangerous, and I think the next step is going to be for you to go for the land use approvals, as Ms. Sparks has indicated. Uh, and they will probably make a condition of that getting, uh, a consent from the municipality, uh, in order to impinge on the right of way. But you, I think you have a sense that they'll do that. So, if that's what you were looking for, that's what you got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scorano.
Thank you.
They're the right church, Mr. Scorano.
It's just the wrong queue.
Right. That's Dr. Phil.
Yeah. Moving along here, Mr. Ralph Crallinger, do you have anything else?
That's all I have this evening.
Okay, very good. Moving on down the line here.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let the report be put here so that Ms. Cassagran doesn't have to end the entire meeting.
Yep, go ahead, Judy. You're muted, Judy. You're muted. You are muted still.
Okay, I think I'm ready now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, we have the code completed. You were supposed to be getting five actual paper copies in the mail. I didn't, don't know whether they have, have arrived yet. I don't hear that they have.
I do not have a copy.
I don't have one.
Well, they, they should've come to City Hall, uh, the person from General Code said they were expected to be delivered on Tuesday, but of course, there was a snowstorm, so.
Are they there, Joe? Mayor?
I didn't receive anything.
No, I mean, you're there, are they there?
You would see a big box of five, five binders, which you've been waiting for paper buy- paper copies of all the codes, so they're, they're in transit, if they're not there.
We do not see them here in the office.
Okay, well, I can, I'll get in touch with the, uh, person from General Code tomorrow and see if they've indicated that they're delivered. But anyway, they're, they're ready, uh, they're under legal review, I think, right now, Mr. Lafferty, am I correct?
Yeah, where we are, um, we just got the PDF copy today, uh, from General Code. We have a. If I speak, Mrs. Cassagran?
Oh, please do, please do, I'm, I'm a little over my head right now, so.
Uh, here's where we are with the process. Um, our office and Mrs. Cassagran, uh, very quickly, we worked with General Code to finalize, uh, these code changes. And, you know, when, when this is done, you're gonna have one of the most comprehensive municipal codes in, in Atlantic County, if not in the city. Um, but, uh, so, right now, what we're doing is, I think, Mrs. Cassagran has done her double check. We're doing the double check, uh, based on our records as to whether all the changes need, need. Assuming that clears, and I, I believe it will because Mrs. Cassagran cleared it, and I'm sure it's gonna be fine. Um, I'm gonna send everything out to, by the end of the week, to you, though. You're gonna get a, a PDF of, of the new code, and then you're going to get, uh, a resolution that has attached to it in Exhibit A that highlights some of the changes. So you're gonna see all of the changes. And we wanted to give you a month to peruse the new code uh, to see if there were any omissions that you knew of or questions that you had. Assuming that you don't, I'm, I'm actually gonna send you a draft ordinance, I said resolution, I meant ordinance. Uh, assuming that you are fine with it, then at the March meeting, we will be able to introduce on first reading an ordinance effectuating all of the changes. Uh, and, and proposing to implement the new code. At that time, it will be made available to the public. I will probably suggest.
And I will probably suggest that we put the PDF on the website, so that the public can access it and review it. Um, and besides that, we, City Hall is closed, so they can't come in and review it. So I'm gonna probably have the PDF put on the website. And then, at your meeting in April, uh, assuming everything is, is focused at it, you will be able to go to second reading.